Moved by Dr. Tar and seconded by Mr. Dallas. Any discussion on the agenda? Period done, all those in favor, say goodbye by saying hi. Motion carries. If you could stand with me and the American flag is right behind us. Join me in the... I'd like to lead you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, introduction. We've not done this here at Luton High School before, so this is the first time. And probably we'll have more people come in, lots of them to filter in as well. We have two topics that we want to speak about this evening. And the first topic is how each school utilizes resources in the community and how they are applied in the schools. And if I could give you some examples. Anybody here from Whale Branch? Whale Branch High School has a number of community events that support Whale Branch High School.
One of the events is the Shelton Township Annual Meeting, where the Shelton Township comes together with a source of churches and other groups within the Shelton community. And Shelton is north of the Whale Branch. It's a township up there. And they hold this in James H. Davis Early Childhood Center, which is there right across the street from Mount Carmel Baptist Church. Because the person that ramrods this is Pastor Moore, the pastor of Mount Carmel Baptist Church. And so they hold this meeting once a year and we get briefings and talk about what we're doing. And it's a big event. A number of people, a number of different spinoffs have come from this. One of them is called the Extra Mile Club. The Extra Mile Club has been in existence for 20 years. And what is, it is a, started by a couple. And the couple is one of the former people in the school district and also a coach. And they work with young boys from grades in, I think it's kindergarten through eighth grade. And they really coach football, but they do more than that. They get involved with the teachers. They get involved with the administration of Whale Branch Elementary or Whale Branch Middle School and Whale Branch High School. And they have a program that runs all year round. Basically, they use athletics. And the co-founder, the wife of the couple, has started a school program for cheerleaders at that age group. So we have the boys playing football and the girls doing cheerleading. They also have a program called the League of Extraordinary Gentlemen. And the League of Extraordinary Gentlemen is also a minister, the youth minister at Mount Carmel Baptist Church. Former Marine Sergeant Carney. And this is a league, a group that he leads of young men who apply to become an extraordinary gentleman. And to do that, they have to maintain their grades and they have to maintain their appearance. And they get different classes on table manners, on how to speak to young ladies and how to dress at the school. We'll have to have Ramon Carney come here sometime and demonstrate what he does. That's just at Whale Branch. Now at Shanklin Elementary, Shanklin Elementary is, has a relationship with Haversham Community. Haversham Community is a well-to-do community, not gated, but it's a well-to-do community. And Haversham provides them funding. They have raised, in the time that they have been sponsoring Shanklin Elementary, well over $60,000. One of the things that they provided was bedtime and a box. And it is a box about like this, by this, cardboard. And in the box, there are games, there are books, and these are for kindergarten. Games and books, a set of pajamas, some toothpaste and toothbrush. And the parents are given this box when they enroll their child, first day of class. The child comes from kindergarten, the parents get this box. And they get it loosely, say, this should be a bedtime standard procedure in your home. Ready for bed, has a, you know, story, play a game, it's using words and colors and so on that you do in kindergarten. All of that has been provided by funding from the community and many other things that they have done. Another folks and we'll... Well, you still need to go. Okay, this is at St. Helena Elementary. And they are sponsored by DOTA. DOTA is a gated community right off of St. Helena Island. And that community comes in and provides mentorship. They read stories to the kids, provide funding for DOTA. So that's the kind of community involvement we wanted to find out what else is being done with the different SICs, the different schools in their community. So talked about St. Helena, we talked about Shanklin, and we talked about Whale Branch. So is there anybody here, anybody from the different SICs, from different schools that know similar program? Anybody?
Dr. Reed.
How many?
Chair at Dr. Reed and we have help run Haversham as well.
Good luck.
We get on the tears.
Great.
Hi, I'm Laura, I'm the SLC Chair at May River High. And actually, we have an event coming up next week called our Sharp Summit. And it is targeted toward our ninth graders. It is a kind of like a cookie affair. And so we have several local and regional businesses that will be coming in to do presentations on various business opportunities as well as what you need to do to prepare for those job or internship opportunities. For example, I am actually working on a session on how to have, how to be interviewed for a job. And so there's also resume writing and different things like that. So big shout out to our Career Technology Department, our head of that, Ms. James. And she's doing, she's done a fantastic job of working on that. And then at the end, I think there's a senior, an option for the seniors to come and meet with all of these businesses.
The other examples of community involvement in the different schools. I'll give you another example, Riverview Charter School. Riverview Charter School is off of Shell Point and actually it's in Port Royal. Riverview Charter School is chartered under the district, but as an independent charter school. They run a program called the Twilight Run. They run it out of Haversham. And that Twilight Run, it's a 5K, it's a 10K, it's a short run for these real young kids. They raise enough money that every year their eighth grade class, before they leave Riverview Charter School and go off to different high schools, they go to Costa Rica. They take an eighth grade class and send them to Costa Rica. And the reason they do that is they send them to a third world country and they don't go to the tourist spots. They go out into the small villages in the country. It's the best place you can see the third world and the safest place to see the third world. But it gives them an idea. They see women and some men in the streams doing their wash. They see how they plant their crops with a stick. It's very, very remote and very, very primitive. But that's gives them an appreciation of what we have in this country. So that's the kind of things that other schools have done. And there's really no reason why all our schools can't engage the community that way. I will also tell you that the school board is reaching out to the community in other ways. The school board is starting to send representatives to different county councils, the county council, and city councils in the area. As well as board members are encouraged to join a service organization in each of their communities. And I will tell you, Mr. Dallas and I have attended a number of them. And we find out things at those meetings that we never knew. And today I started with Exchange Club in Beaufort. At Exchange Club today, they asked me to give a little talk. I turned in my membership request. And after it was over with, they gave an award to a senior at Beaufort High School. The Exchange Club did, they're student, Honor Student of the Month. And after the meeting was over, the parents came up to me and the mother came up to me. And she said, I've been trying to get a job in the Beaufort County School District for years. I'm a math teacher in, what's the county, not... Oh, shoot. The one, right, no, right south of them. Hampton, Hampton County. I'm a math teacher at Hampton County High School. I live in Beaufort and I commute every day to Hampton County to that high school. I said, Matt, you're a math teacher and you can't? Well, I've been trying, but I'm, I came 14 years ago as a foreign teacher, under a foreign teacher's visa, and took up residency. And supposedly there's a problem with the residency. But it wasn't a problem for Hampton County to hire her for 14 years. And I said, well, please send me a resume and I will send it to Dr. Rodriguez. But that's the kind of things that the board can do by reaching out to the community. And one of the things that we're looking at, of course, is what to do in the future growth in northern Beaufort County. So that we don't have the same kind of challenges we're having in southern Beaufort County with different places coming in and building different subdivisions and where the schools are and so on. So that's another reason why we are reaching out, try to understand what's happening. So my question to the SICs, what are your contacts with the local governmental agencies, the cities or county? Anybody have any of those? No? Maybe that's something, we have SICs that are doing great work in the schools. But you are also ambassadors as an SIC member to the community. And the nice thing about being an ambassador is people will come up to you, if they know you're an ambassador, and tell you the good and sometimes not so good that you get to hear. But I will tell you from our experience in just starting this, since we're in the community, we're hearing a lot more good than not so good. Paul, can you answer anything about that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to add, some of the things I've learned from the Colonel as we've gone to several of these meetings is to, you're being an ambassador, and so many great things happening in the school district. And you are so well positioned to actually be a messenger to help that penetrate into the community. The school district under the superintendent has created a community report. How many of you have seen those? Yellow? Okay. We strongly encourage you to get some of those from... We strongly encourage you to get some of those from the Communications. And as you go to these events that the Chair is asking us to attend, hand those out. I attended with the Chair of Beaufort County's three day strategic meeting. I didn't attend all three days, but I did show up. Uh, and participated in one of the other things that Google will be doing all three. But the thing that people that the Chair did, Colonel Guy, is he showed the facilities and I mean uh book. People were so unprepared. This is what we're talking about. Uh, you. We can pass that down. So that has so many things and we are really in a competitive posture now against other types of academic opportunities for citizens. And we want them to know the complete disarray of the success that we're having across all sectors of the spectrum. And that is very important. So I've learned a lot just attending those meetings. Colonel Guy and Superintendent Rodriguez, he's done about five of them for us. Uh, so if you ask, they show up. Thank you, sir.
You know, if thirty years ago, any of you from Buckton area. I'm sure the city council of Buckton had no idea what Buckton would look like. And nobody from the school board that I can find out from people that have been in the school board back then ever attended planning meetings and said, what about schools? So we now have twenty twenty hindsight of how not to have schools in the proper place. So we need to have at least twenty forty, twenty fifty foresight to see where we're going to have to be in the next thirty years. And that's how uh we have to reach out to the locals, planning folks, and make sure that we know what's going on. One of the problems that we have because of that is we have problems getting permitting taken care of. We're having problems with May River Elementary, uh getting that ready to go. It could have been probably taken care of well early on when May River High School was started. We should have probably worked a better, a better deal with the permit with the Palmetto Bluff and the other side that owns that area. So that's why we're about. And we really hope that you and the S I C get out and give us those heads up when you hear about things that are happening. There's a lot of questions. Today I got asked about a number of things. One, we had the issue with the um problem at Robert Robert Smalls at the battery replacement with the weapons found. And so there was a lot of discussion about what we should do to make our schools more secure. And it's hard, it's hard business. And of course, there's always one that came up with metal detectors. And we explained to them that we've looked at metal detectors. And I said to them, how many people have been through a TSA checkpoint and get on an airplane? And that's what metal detectors in front of a school would look like. And so we would have to have more staff. We would also have to have more of a sheltered place for people to line up out of the rain. So they can go through the checkpoint. And Dr. Rodriguez told me there's one other thing. He said metal detectors tend to give you a false sense of security. Saying, well, there can't be any weapons in here because everybody goes through a metal detector. But even in the TSA misses things. And because we did not have that false sense of security, the weapons that were identified were identified through the administration by those troops. And if they thought that there was metal detectors, there can't be any weapons in here, this rumor we heard must not be true. So that came up today. And that by being going to these things as S I C member or as board members, you get a chance to hear what the community is saying. And you get a chance to answer it if you can, and if you can't, at least bring it back to the superintendent and say, this is what I heard. This is what we should get out to people. So make some comments about.
Also, also want to add, she was as well as uh one of Mr. Gary's people talking about being ambassadors and all of us working together amongst the S I Cs. That one thing too that we were talking about amongst the community um about how we can better serve the communities and the students that we that we serve. Right now, too, we have uh in the state of South Carolina, we have our top six representatives who are in the State House. Um, Shannon Erickson, Bill Cusman, uh Cusman and and all the rest of them. And right, right now, uh South Carolina is leading the way in terms of our representatives, representatives in the State House and then in terms of the meetings and which we we have, we have the six power chairs, the main six that means something right now, we have that. I think that that is something that we have to utilize to better in a Beaufort County, Beaufort County school, the school district. Saying that also, there's a concern right now, there's some bills, there's some bills that are being talked about. And in some of the, and in these six representatives, um they're they're representing in terms of utilizing public funds for private entities. And these are things that public that that also that we need to know and also that it needs to be talked about in terms of how 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 it will affect our public school centers. How will affect the people who sit in this room and who send students to public schools? And for some people, maybe uncomfortable conversation, but it's a conversation that that must must be had. And it's a conversation that we have to figure out how once we lose funding, how how would that hurt us? And you know, there are often times where we at the schools, we've had meetings and some representative had 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 come down because what they've said was that uh school teachers unfortunately don't vote. So that that that's something that we have to learn to all work together, support each other. And what that look like as community, we have to figure it out because we all have to help each other. It it takes, it takes, it does take some village. So the uh in terms of food for thought, both are just some of the other things that I think that in terms of not just being ambassadors, but but you need any of the S I Cs can talk about. How can we help the bottom line and how can we also understand what's going on in the state? How can we understand what's going on and give the time to better utilize our resources and our tools that we have and our tool there? So that is something I want, I want, I want to put out there that is is very important. Right, right now, it's not many other places across the state that have that many power brokers in one area. So I just want to, I just want to put that out. Like.
All right. Good morning.
Good evening.
Um, pleasure to be here, a pleasure to meet you. I am relatively new to this and I am your neighbor. Uh, so I live across the street. So um as the Colonel has said, that we are dedicated to learning as much about our communities as we can and planning for the future and learning from you. So having conversations, probably more readily scheduled conversations on different topics in different ways and different places, I think will be potentially very valuable for all of us as we work through all of the things that we're faced with on a regular basis to take care of thirty two schools and twenty one thousand students. So I just wanted to kind of open up. I'm glad to be here. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. Just uh thank you all for being here and appreciate the opportunity to hear from you. I know we have uh some other topics on there, another topic on there that we're going to talk about as well. Uh, Dr. Lee will share some information about the cell phone. Um, but we appreciate uh appreciate you being here and the opportunity to hear from you as well on these topics that uh that have been identified for today. Um, you know, the role of S I C is important and it's important to schools. And it's important that that your engagement, your participation uh with your administrators at your school and with your teachers at your school uh to help make our schools uh greater places for for our children uh to attend and greater places for them to achieve their uh their highest potential and the outcomes that they desire. So your input is valuable uh to us throughout this process. So thank you very much.
So we've talked, we haven't heard from from y'all. What do y'all think? What can we do as a S I C, as a board, as a district to better uh work with our community? Anybody want to volunteer? There we go.
Frankly, we helped with here at Buckton High, we've been at this side community, we've gone to churches, we've gone to events, we've argued and engaged. Chamber of Commerce and we struck out.
Struck out.
Struck out.
Because?
We don't know. If I knew, I would fix it. So uh well, part of the problem, I just I'm doing this a long time, when things are going well, it's harder to get people involved. Now, if we had a crisis, we'd have a lot. But if anybody has any ideas.
I'm Dr. Norvins, I'm the co-chair of our Buckton High School S I C.
Can't hear you, can you speak up just a little bit?
Okay. Sorry. Um, I'm Dr. Norvins. I am the uh co-chair of the S I C here at Buckton High School. So I was just responding to what Dr. Sandusky was sharing with you. I personally, along with Dr. Sandusky, have met with the Buckton Chamber of Commerce. And we had asked them how they could be involved with a uh instead of having a person represented on our S I C. We were told that we would need a membership to the Buckton Chamber in order to uh have that opportunity. Years ago, I recall the Buckton Chamber at that point in time being very open to having members on our board, which we, I'm sorry, on our S I C, which we did have. So they changed their policies. Uh, in addition to that, uh as Dr. Sandusky mentioned, we tried to reach out head on to our community, which is Sun City. Because there's a wealth of individuals with information who could serve our schools. Uh, we've had challenges there with connecting with them as well. So um we would appreciate any type of help, support you can give us.
I got an idea. The uh the district has a membership to the Beaufort Chamber of Commerce. And I go to Beaufort Chamber of Commerce things when I can. There's no reason why the district can't buy a Buckton Chamber of Commerce membership. And then you, as an S I C, would be able to go represent uh the district to the uh Chamber of Commerce.
I believe we're already members of the Buckton Chamber and the Buckton Chamber. Both of the two chambers.
Dr. Rodriguez, we mentioned that. We them and the response was uh I don't, I don't know who they, I would appreciate if someone
I'm happy to do. Yep, I'm happy to do.
They have so much to offer to all of our schools, not only to Buckton High.
Yep. Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Would you, oh, thank you.
Actually, when we, when I do presentations at the chambers, if I can get your local uh name, maybe I'll bring you with me.
Okay, well, I I know that there's representatives who we.
But I will say, um, so Laura, Dan, May River High School, one of our goals, um our S I C goals this year is to really try to connect with our community more. Um, one thing that we have done, I'm not saying it's successful yet because we're still in the gathering part, is just connecting with a variety of our school contacts. Um, I've been in contact with our career and technology counselor, with our um sports booster club president, with our P T O. Trying, the problem is, um, you know, even if we're looking at a district, but even in a school, you have so many different sectors. And rarely do they, you know, kind of all come together. Um, which is one of the most frustrating things as an S I C chair. It's literally, we are mandated to have community support. Um, and that is the hardest thing. So I've been reaching out to these other organizations, trying to collect um names and contact information of supporters, sponsors. Um, we have amazing businesses and uh community organizations in all of our areas that already support the school. However, they might support one sector of the school. Um, and you don't necessarily know that. So I'm trying to build a central database for May River High School of all of our community sponsors. Um, it is easier said than done. Um, but also one thing I wanted to bring up that was actually suggested, I think, at one of last year or the year before um joint S I C meetings was for the school district to have a um central like volunteer pool for um the someplace that the school district can advertise that they are looking for volunteers. You go on, you know, register um and then to potentially have um open houses at the schools for volunteers in particular. Um, you know, we're right next to Palmetto Bluff and as you uh mentioned, Palmetto Bluff actually owns New Riverside. Um, however, um and maybe whoever is a representative for that area can help with this. We've had a really hard time connecting with that community and they're right there. Um, we'd love for them to be part, but you know, S I Cs are mandated to have two community representatives by the state. Um, and each school, um, and I I will try not to speak for other schools, although I've worked on S I Cs for other schools. That is the hardest part of our job. Um, and so I think if we come together as a team, um talking as a sports mom, to come together as a district to reach out to um our communities and let them know, you know, hey, our doors are open again for volunteers. I mean, there's still some hesitancy ever since COVID. Um, and in what capacities, because a lot of times you think, oh, gosh, you know, I I just have to go in and, you know, work with kids. Maybe I don't really love working with kids. Hey, that's okay. You know, the S I C, you only see kids if you're a high school S I C. So but you're a vital member of our community. Um, so I think if we tried as a unified um group to pull together and let our communities know that, hey, we need you on our S I Cs, we're required, we're mandated, we want to hear from you. I mean, besides the fact that we're mandated by state law, we do want to hear from you. Um, I think that would be really helpful.
We have someone online as well.
Okay, who's online?
Um, you have two, you have Jenny Brainard and David Muslum. So Jenny was first.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, hi, Jenny Brainard, S I C at um Cusaw Elementary. We have a lot of local partnerships and Ms. Pender can speak more to that. But what I wanted to speak to is we've um our goal, one of our goals is to um increase student awareness about um other countries, diversity around the world. Um, and we started our passports program this year. So we have um each grade level looks at three different countries on the half day, the half day. So we've just finished our third half day. Um, so for example, uh the fourth grade where my granddaughter is in, she she visited Greece, Venezuela and Kenya this year. And the kids even talk about it like, you know, I went to this country and we, you know, we make it feel like they're getting on an airplane and they're they're going to learn about culture and food and geography and literature. Um, so we're we're really trying to prepare these kids to have, you know, more global connections. Um, and one of the um And one of the, one of our goals now in figuring out how to grow this even more. The kids have loved it, the the teachers have really taken it and and run with it. We've had parents come in from different countries this past time. We had, we had a couple that is from Venezuela come and talk to the kids that were learning about Venezuela. And the the mom speaks very little English, she had a translator. And that was even special in its own way, the kids got to to hear from somebody who is is from another country. And what it's like to be in that country and to share that. I lived in Germany myself for for some amount of time with the military. I shared with the second graders about that were studying Germany this last time. And it's, Ms. Pender has put some of this out on, and she can share how she did this better than me. But I know that she has, because of this, has made connections with Pakistan, Nigeria, India, and Brazil. So we've, we've had these interactions over Zoom with other leader in me schools around around the world. And this was, this was a byproduct that we, I don't think I thought of it. We didn't even think of it as a, as a nice byproduct.
Thank you. One other thing I'd like to mention, which you might try, is service organizations. Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions Club, all of these organizations look for speakers. Especially Rotary and Kiwanis, they have a meeting every week. And they're always scrambling to get a speaker in. Contact these service organizations, every one of them has a community outreach program. Come in and say, would you like to hear about my school? I'd love to come in and talk to you. And they'll snap it right up. I guarantee you, as I used to be a program manager, that have to set that up. You're always looking for speakers to come in. Can you help something?
Angie Benson, and I'm the rep for Hilton Head Elementary. And our Rotary connection has been really strong. We have an early act Rotary Club at the school even, so once a month they have a meeting. And the community building was really huge for us this year, last year. And we look at it as two parts. One is getting our community in, but then we're teaching our kids to go out into the community. So Rotary was key for helping us find an elementary school. It's hard to find volunteer opportunities. But we asked them and we asked Chamber to give us ideas of places where we can send our kids. And then we highlight the kids when they do that stuff on the website. We try to put it on the P T A Facebook page. And that wound up, we had a school cleanup with Rotary, an early act. And that led Paul, who was the rep there, to ask about, we have a volunteer program called Whispers on Patrol. Where the otters and a whisper is the name of the otter. But the idea of it is to get community members to volunteer. And we learned last year that you have to give very specific kinds and things for volunteers to do. So we're starting with car line high fives and lunchroom monitoring. So two ways that we can really help give our teachers a little bit of a break and help the kids feel bolstered by the community. And giving those very specific things to ask the community to do has helped really increase getting people interested at least. And then, and then it's pushing them to do the volunteer application online. But we're hoping to bring it to through Rotary. Because of where we live, all the different communities and native communities, the ladies clubs and men's clubs in those areas. We do want to bring it to a chamber meeting, but we have like a slide deck prepared. That's a very simple, this is what it is, this is how you sign up. In hopes that then people know they can come into the school and see it in a very concrete, achievable way. But Rotary is a huge rock.
My name is Jennifer Walter, I'm S I C chair at Hilton Head High, and my husband is Paul. But if you're looking for community members, hit up the Rotary because those are the most volunteer oriented people I've ever met. And so they are going to be people who are going to say yes if you need community members for your S I C.
First on line, David Muslum.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, hey, good afternoon, and I appreciate the discussion and the opportunity to engage with with other colleagues on the S I C. I'm David Muslum, and I'm a vice chair at Bufer High School. And, you know, I wanted to build a little bit on some of the comments that have that have already been said. And some of my thought process that, you know, has been spoken to over the last couple of minutes. But I think there's a real opportunity, obviously. You know, one of the biggest challenges that I see is getting getting greater involvement in the schools. And I know we were talking earlier about, you know, the support of the Chamber and some of these other organizations. And I think that's a really powerful thing, right? I think sometimes some of these groups, at least at least on the Bufer side of the river, you know, I think they get hit up continuously for financial support over and over by the same organization because there's a limited pool of them. And certainly, hey, I think that's important. We've got to have the financial resources to to do whatever it is academically or athletically. But I think beyond that, I think what the what people are tapping into with is is really beyond that with the Rotary and some of the other organizations there is as valuable as it is to have some of that money, really the the intellectual property that exists in some of these groups is even more valuable to potentially to our students. And and, you know, really looking for opportunities, obviously, for us to go out and engage with them. But I think a couple of comments a minute ago were, hey, how do we get more of those voices into our schools? And and I think, you know, if we can look for opportunities, whether it's, hey, maybe it's us going out to engage with them first, but then creating opportunities. There's a lot of people in these organizations that have a lot of wisdom and insight and career advice and and things like that that I think would be tremendously beneficial for our students to hear more about real world experience. And, you know, I, I think as we start to do that, right? I think it gets people more involved and more committed and more passionate. And, you know, that that certainly opens up people's willingness to, it kind of gets a snowball going down the hill a little bit. And maybe they're willing to open up their wallets a little bit more and, you know, get more and more and more involved over time. So I would just encourage us to all look for those opportunities to to bring those voices into the school and create forums where we we can hear from from, you know, people that that have real world experience in in business or in healthcare or in academics or whatever the case may be. Because I think there's a lot in in our community that could be offered up that way.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Kelly Goudy, I'm the assistant principal at Ladies Island Elementary School. And I was supposed to go after you, David, because my piggyback lines up exactly with what you were saying. At Ladies Island, we've been talking a lot about community and parent engagement. And one of the things that we just started talking about is finding, stop asking for so many resources to start off and start inviting people into the everyday things we do. Take away the idea of the family night and create the community night. Invite community members in, the churches that work with our kids on a nightly basis, into those those family nights, those learning nights. And establishing that and welcoming them in to build those connections to see how great our kids and our families are. And then creating that organically, letting them come to award assemblies. You know, sometimes kids are upset because they don't have someone there to cheer for them. So creating that and opening our doors and then creating that, that relationship that way.
Yeah, but I think, you know, that really hits the nail on the head. And I would add one more thing to it. I think as you're engaging different community groups, you have to know what the ask is that you're asking, right? And I think the gentleman was spot on, you know, Kelly as well. And it doesn't have to be about about finance, right? Everybody's tapping into finances, different sports clubs are tapping into the same resources or sports teams, you know, within schools of these same individuals, right? But but about their talent, right? Give you an example, I've tapped into Sun City and have a connection with a veterans organization in Sun City. And that group is, you know, making themselves available to our school sites as speakers, and these are veterans from various wars. And the opportunity to speak about experiences. So it's more than just reading about it in a textbook, but you have a real life experience, right? Another example is I've tapped into a gentleman on Hilton Head, right? And this gentleman worked on, worked for NASA, and he worked on Saturn rockets that put men on the moon, right? And and so he has been engaged in some of our schools to speak with children about science and specifically about his work in that. And so that's the talent, right? That's the talent that that is in our community. And and that's one thing, Bufer County is loaded with talent. We've got lots of retirees around that have tremendous life experience. And that's how, if you've heard about the citizen-led oversight committee that I put together to monitor how the school district executes on the referendum projects. Those are all volunteer hours, but those are all based on individuals in our community with tremendous expertise, it's an opportunity to leverage their talent to support the work at schools. Same thing for these other opportunities. But one thing's important, know the ask. Know what it is we're asking of them, because lots of people want to help. They just don't know how to get engaged enough. So if we know the ask, then we can get the right people from there.
See, one last thing that I learned before we move to the cell phone issue. And that is, I went to a school and I asked them, how can you get more people to come to your school events? And they said, well, we had a problem because we were only inviting the parents. And then we realized, what about the grandparents? What about the aunts and the uncles and other family members? And as soon as we started sending those invitations out to extended family members, our participation doubled. So I took that over to Robert Smalls. They have a first Friday, every first Friday of the month, in the morning, they invite families, S I C, they come in and they give them a talk. And I said, hey, Mr. Principal, what about inviting grandparents and so on? He said, yeah, I'll try that. And next month, they have three times for participation. So there's something you might try is reach out to extended families to bring them in. Now we need to talk about cell phones.
I tell you one last thing.
Okay.
Also, I just wanted to tie out into what Dr. Novens was saying. Also, speaking, speaking about that, when I look around the room, what is one thing that you don't see here today? Where are we at? School, students. What needs to tap into, when I was a student at Bufer High School, what we did was, and how they kind of got us involved, when that S I C, there was like P T O. I wasn't part of student government. So they had us to sometimes, some representatives to come to the meetings. And they would ask us different questions, and they would allow us to bring people. So how do you, how we get engaged, get community involved as well, we got involved students. We had to have some students sitting right here in this meeting and telling us what the what the answers are. How can they, how can they get people here and where, and who are they talking to? We have to activate the student network. Because students, it's simply one tweet or one text message, and the whole, how do we diagnose about it? So that's one thing to be real quick. And and the second thing is also too, on the Bufer side, we had a joint S I C meeting. We had Bufer High School, Ladies Island Middle School, St. Helena, Ladies Island Elementary. Listen, we had the amount of people that came out one night in the S I C. We were able to pool our networks together. So I just want to put those things out there. Students, and also how we have S I C meeting, we had a cluster S I C meeting. Pulling your resources and seeing what other people have, so therefore you're not overhaul tackling it to other ones. And you're not, you're not taking everything from, we're not taking all the bottom, thank you.
Thank you. What, I'm amazed and really pleasantly viewing the enthusiasm and the ideas everyone's had so far. So that's really appreciated, and gives me as a board member a better understanding of what you're already doing and how we as a board can supplement. I'd just like to share one thing. Have any of you been in sales? Okay, you've been in sales. Never ever take a no person. Never, ever. No is a challenge for you to figure out a way to get to a yes. And view that as a competitive thing back and forth until you get that yes. A couple of things I noted is when you go out, ask the person or the entity, how do they benefit from public shit? Because most people don't even think about it. Public schools is one institution in America that incorporates our social values, our ethics, our morals, in addition to our activity. So they benefit from it. The next thing is make it personal. Find one person or two people in the organization, develop a rapport with them, and then show them. In the business world, business is personal. If there are two people competing progress, projects or product, they're going to go to the person they know. Same thing for change, general, and human interaction. And then the last thing is always leaving with a question, how can I help you? That's the one that clinches and brings them back, or they see you as an asset to whatever they're trying to achieve. So it's a binary flow of benefit. We help them, and we got to make sure they're helping us. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Last S I C meeting we had, you all came to us and said, fix the cell phone issue. And starting last fall, we gave a cell phone policy out. And then we had to adjust it because the state's cell phone policy came out. It made it a little more that company than I thought, but took away the high schools having cell phones during the lunch hour. That was not our choice, but that is now the statute. So I would really like to hear from you all how it's, how that's worked out.
Hasn't changed much, we haven't, it wasn't a huge issue for us in the past.
Because you can't get a cellphone.
But it really hasn't.
Hasn't, hasn't been a change.
It's been a change, I mean, we pretty much, well, it's been a change, but the better, I think, when they say, take away the person, you know, it's not my personal choice, just hey, state law. As a department chair and talking to people by department, other teachers, I think.
I have two sons at Hilton Head Island Middle School, and it's much better. They didn't have a cellphone until Christmas seventh grade. So they spent a year and a half having lunches and having nobody to talk to, and that was awful. So now things are so much better. I mean, they're still sneaking, they're still, you know, going in the dugout at recess and texting. But I don't think the bullies are bad, and I think they're paying more attention to us.
Heard that one yesterday, the elementary.
So at Bufer High, Assistant Principal Bufer High School, it has been a challenge. High school students are a little more vocal about the policy and what they like and dislike. So our numbers, I think we might win the award for the, for the battle of the cell phone. So it's been a challenge, especially since they had the addition to it of no cellphone during lunch. So it started the year being able to at least use it during lunch and take it back. That was a lot of police still is. And like they mentioned, going into the dugout, they will go into the bathroom, they will sneak and use the cell phone. But for the most part, if we address it, if we say it, if I have to say it in the hallway, it's not enough.
I'm Tracy Zuny Summit of T Elementary, and I was allowed to serve on the committee where we dug into research and really focused on the main focus of schools, instruction in the classroom, and how can we maximize engagement and students collaboration together. And I think the committee, the focus was being able to understand our digital native students, especially the older ones. In elementary school, a lot of parents have smartwatches and things on children for locations because they're out in neighborhoods. And so it was a lot of education, but parents understand the need for students to be engaged and really to have that instructional time protected. And so at an elementary level, we've had a lot more understanding for parents. But the education and the information that was sent out beforehand, I think, let parents know and then giving them the opportunity to talk about it back to school night. And we've also helped to proactive communication from the elementary. And hopefully, when these kids get to high school, we won't have to say that. And hopefully when these kids get to high school, we won't have to say that.
Yeah, I'm Keith Stewart. I'm the principal of Bluffton Middle School. And, um, I also was working up to serve on the committee for the cell phone policy, developing that. And, uh, honestly, at Bluffton Middle School, we actually implemented this policy in our building, uh, over three years ago. And for us, so it wasn't new for our kids, so it was nice for us. A big part of that, we started it several years ago with our sixth grade hallway. It was a push from our teachers. They, they requested that and we supported and went that. And I think it was important because now sixth grade went through, as last year we went full throughout our building. And then this year, of course, in our building, school, uh, schoolwide as well. It's been important because now everybody in our building is used to it. There's already, it's not new to them. Our seventh and eighth graders, you know, they've got it. They know what the expectation is. So I think just being consistent with that expectation and, um, and following through whenever it comes to, whenever those things pop up, because it will pop up. They're pre-teens or teenagers and cell phones are going to be a part of it. And that's okay. We just need to make sure we address it. I'll also say that in the years that I've been at Bluffton Middle School, I've never had an issue with a parent or having a conversation with a parent that had an issue with me confiscating a cell phone or misuse of a phone. So I always appreciate that as well. And I think, again, it just came from that consistency with the policy and making sure that we were enforcing that schoolwide. So for us, it's definitely been positive and we're glad to see it go statewide.
One for the president. Go on, Maitan.
Um, I'm going to pass it.
I'll just say for May River, it hasn't really been a problem. Um, one reason, um, because we don't have great service there anyway. So it wasn't, it really wasn't, uh, as much of an issue beforehand. Um, so, uh, but I, we actually had an SIC meeting last night and I asked our, um, staffers and administration and they said, you know, there's always going to be those that are still, you know, finding ways to use it. But, um, it's really not been, um, an issue worth noting.
Echo at the elementary level, we had the same thing with the smartwatches. There was a lot of confusion about them being included, um, and a lot of parent hesitation about the safety aspect. And I'd agree, the education and the listening and explaining, um, along with the fact that there's so many other ways to communicate directly with teachers with, um, the Talking Points app and the emails. They've been so good at being communicative that I feel like that elated any fear pretty quickly. And I'm surprised at how, how much it went away. I was really prepared for that to be a continued fight, but I think they also see the benefit of not having the distraction in the classroom.
I think, uh, what I would add, uh, to the conversation is, uh, you know, you mentioned the upfront communication about it. And for students at school, whether you know or you don't know, uh, there were scripts that were read on a daily basis and for each class period, right? Uh, for the initial, uh, several weeks, right, at the beginning. And, and it, and to tell you the truth, our students are awesome. Right? I mean, they have done an amazing job in compliance around this. And I can go back to last spring. Uh, I do these, uh, student advisory councils where I visit the high schools and, and I'll talk with groups of about 30 kids and show and, and chat with them about what's going on. Tell me about your experiences. And I get a firsthand account of kids because they'll tell me the truth, right? You know, when you want to hear your word, right? So they'll tell you. But, but what I heard from kids about the cell phone, and I broached the cell phone subject, uh, with them because I knew it was something we were already looking at, right? And, and what I, because it actually, I don't know if you remember, but it also, it came up from, from this week, from this group, right? Um, one of the things that I heard from kids across different schools, if you're asking our vote for it, of course, we're not going to vote, right? But if it happened, it happened. And in some ways it might be a welcome move. Like they, they said it would be a welcome move, right? And I think that speaks to, uh, you know, their own exhaustion, whether they want to admit it or not, but with, with the phone, right? And so, uh, they've been, they've been pretty awesome in terms of their compliance and, and what's the master's done. Uh, and I've seen things in other parts of the country where, you know, you've had, uh, really rough engagements between some students and a teacher and, and, you know, third grade. We hadn't seen anything.
Said on the agenda, we would stop at seven o'clock. It's seven o'clock. And I want to thank you for coming. I want to thank you for your input and I hope you've got some ideas. Seven thirty it said. Oh, you have more time. Thank you, David. So, so we do have, we do have what we call in the military alibi. What's an alibi? Never mind. So any other topics that you would like to, to address? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
I think the next year of business should be a policy and prevention for vaping. That's a big issue. That was the main issue of our SIC this entire year. And I went down rabbit holes on Reddit trying to figure out how other states are preventing it. And there are ways. It's just, it's neither.
That, that has come up before and we've looked at some things. I'll let Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Colonel. Dr. Lee, slip. Um, I think one of the things we found, I mean, there, there are different devices. For example, you can flip, uh, in, in restaurants and, and things like that around, uh, that can detect, uh, vaping, right? What I've found with, with talking to other schools is that they're, those quickly get ripped off of walls or, or students vape, right? And then they, they go right into, into the toilet, so it goes right into the water. And then it doesn't, it doesn't pick up, uh, uh, the detection. They're pretty nifty. I mean, kids are pretty, pretty, pretty nifty. The other thing, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of destruction that happens with the vape tube. It's not just a personal destruction to their own home, right? That, that, that's there. But then they don't want to get caught with it, so they stuff it in the toilet, right? And then, and then that, that then creates backups in, in bathrooms, right? And, and toilet, which causes another cost, financial cost on the, on the system as well. But it is an issue. It is an issue, you know? It is an issue. You're right about that. And, and, uh, you know, trying to find, maybe that's some way to, to just look at some research on what else might be out there that, that, uh, may be a, a good tool, uh, to use to.
Check out, for the future board. Look at, now they'll tell you what's worth being, now.
Okay. See, one, one other thing. I talked to PJ Tanner about this. And I said, you know, you have to be 21 to buy these. And so why don't you have people out there busting these convenience stores and so on that are selling these things to our kids? And he said, I'm trying. I said, it's, it's exploding on me. I don't have enough undercover. I hear about it and he said, if you hear about it, if you know, find out, this convenience store will sell it to anybody. Please let the resource officer at your school know that. Because that's what PJ says, he needs, he needs intelligence. So he doesn't have to have officers scattered throughout the county without being more targeted uh, to the problem areas that, that it's coming from.
I was just, uh, kind of being funny, but I was passing by Dr. Rodriguez's pin because really, you know, they have vapes that look like pins. They have, they have vapes that look like USBs. They have vapes that look like cell phone. There's so many different things to the amount of time that would go into it. I, it's almost just like the cell phone. It's, it's, it's kind of scary. So I mean, it takes everyone. And parents, like, like you just said, I actually need to say what I was going to say. When you find this, when you find your kids are in these vapes online on Amazon, when they get an Amazon, Amazon package, check it out. That might be a vape. So I mean, the vapes look, they, they look like everything we have on this table, vapes look like. So it, it, it's, it's a lot that goes into it. We have to, once against a teen effort, the community has to be involved, parents have to, uh, give some parental help. So that, that, that's, that's a, that's a huge task that I hadn't seen, uh, no one in the country, across, across country that, that's winning. Not saying that we, the way that they'll entertain it, but it's going to take all of us.
Texas just passed a law and kids that are caught in Texas now are automatically sent to a, Texas passed a law recently. And any child caught vaping at school now is sent to a juvenile detention program for a minimum, I want to say days, and they said, it's done. Nobody is vaping in Texas anymore. The other thing they're doing is they're charging the parents and I forget the amount, but it might've been $500 for every time in Texas that a child is caught vaping in the bathroom. So the thing is, is like, if we don't do something, the government is eventually probably going to step in and do something. But there are some really good ideas out there. There are some things that are working, like the, um, the vape detectors. One school bought, only had money for one. So the janitor hides it in a different bathroom every single day in the vent. And the kids don't know which bathrooms it's in, so they, you know, they can't do it. Um, other things were, you have the vape detector, have the camera right outside the bathroom. So because of what happened, it goes off, it's run out and then you know, in fact, it was sold off. So there were some things on the line and I know it's a huge thing, but, I mean, we had a parent come in to one of our SIC meetings a few months ago in tears because it's not in the vaping. There's drug deals going on. There's all kinds of things. And her son is, is a dealer and she was sobbing. And what can we do? And, and how is this happening? And how is this starting in middle school? So it's just a real problem I wanted to be aware of because I think you're going to be hearing more about it.
So I just wanted to, to share some information with you. Uh, I am a consultant with the Country Alliance for Helping Youth. Uh, this federally funded. Yes. Uh, and we have a youth initiative, which is Teens for Helping Youth. But I wanted to share some information with you about the work that we've been doing. Uh, because of the work of not only our coalition in our board, but the work of our teens and teens for helping youth, now this is only here in Southern Beaufort County, uh, we have been able to influence, uh, our towns of Lussey and the towns of Hilton Head to change their ordinances. So now they include vaping in their smoking ordinance. I don't know what you all are doing in Northern Beaufort County. Uh, in addition to that, our youth do, uh, a lot of work within the schools, educating the students, not only about the dangers, the legions, the legal consequences. Recently, a group of our board members, and this is connected to, with our grant, to our strategic plan, uh, visited a number of vape shops on Hilton Head Island and here in Bluffton. And of course, what they are seeing being sold is, is unbelievable. Because a lot of these vape shops, they're not only selling vapes. They are selling drinks infused with what they will call, they say is from the hemp plant. Actually, it's, as a psychologist, I've done a lot of research on it. What they're really selling is THC. So we have a lot of, we say, it's not only about the vape. It's not only about the vape. It's what they're vaping. Oh, okay. It's not only about the vapes. It's, it's what they're vaping. Uh, so they're going to be, the, the group who did do this, they're called Environmental Spans of these vape shops will be getting reported on by our board soon. So I just wanted to share that all with you. Uh, I don't know what policies we have in our schools around vaping. Dr. Rodriguez, do you know? So we, we, I know we can't get the support, at least our, the towns of Bluffton and Hilton Head, if, if we do have a pass.
No, we, we, I mean, it's, it's, it's not allowed. Right? It's not allowed in schools, right? But, uh, I mean, obviously kids don't run into a bathroom, you know, as mentioned, and, and, um, you can't have cameras in there. So, you know, uh, we, we have supervision that goes in and out, but you're not there at the right time, you know? Uh, it's, it's, those are the kinds of, they find issues. But it is, it is, it is a big deal. It is a big deal and it is, and it, and it is, uh, getting pervasive or it is pervasive amongst, uh, amongst the youth.
Uh, my name is Preston.
Okay.
My name is Preston Alton. I'm a community member with you. I want to say something about the local field. There's a guy in Hilton Head, he's actually educating the kids about the nicotine replacements. The little, the little pouches and gum and whatnot. So he, he actually worked in the state person, he's educating the kids. So I was pretty impressed with that. Now onto the ordinance. Up in Travisville, Michigan, they're not even available. They're just going to abolish from sale. They cut off the supply. And, and that's exactly, if we could cut off the supply, and I, I hate, I hate it for the business people, but you know, it's all for the kids, right? Cut off the supply at the county, county level somehow.
Mine is on a different subject. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't mention something that was suggested or asked from, uh, a parent. Um, back to the conversation regarding, um, safety issues. One question a parent has asked is, and I'm not personally for this, however, I'm representing my SIC, is clear book bags for students. So, uh, we have the clear bag policy for sporting events and whatnot. Um, so that is, um, one thing that has come up that I wanted to present to the board. Just a question about the idea of having clear book bags or mesh book bags or, or whatnot. Again, I'm not a huge fan, but, um, I'm wanting to make sure that I put it out there. So at our school, we're doing something to where, um, the first part of the class, the teacher will take the students to the restroom. She's right, or he is right there with them. So it's almost like going back to elementary school when they know that that supervision is there. So they're not going to be able to vape or do what they want to do in there. They'll think that's like standing right outside the door waiting for them to come out. That also has another benefit and that's in the sense that when they get to class, they can automatically just say, oh, I need to go to the restroom. We don't break that, that class time. So we just went, everybody's fine and we're good. We're going to stay here. And then we also have our passes to where it actually is automated and it keeps track of how many times a student is going to the restroom or making breaks or, you know, going to the gadget hub or whatever. So you kind of have a record of somebody that might be having an issue with that kind of thing.
Online, uh, one of the reps is saying that that is an important issue, but vaping online, they said vaping is not on the agenda. So we should not be talking about it. It's a important topic before a future topic. So, and they're asking, are we certainly that too, so?
Everybody, so. Is there anything more to say about cell phones? There is nobody else on the agenda.
Um, over here on this, uh, table, we have copies of our 2024 community report. So grab some of those on the way out. Also save the date Thursday, April 10th. Uh, we will be holding a meeting together. You want to, but we'll keep that on the draft calendar or the next few years. I have little, uh, save the date paper, stick it on your fridge. Uh, so grab some of those too, and I will send that out by email next week.
Do we have future topics? Number one.
Substitute contracts and the way EFS is working. So this comes up at every meeting. So I actually signed up to do it. I went through the process and I've been subbing for the last month at three of the schools in our area. Um, and I cannot tell you how enlightening.
Um, and I cannot tell you how enlightening. I've been an involved parent for years, but being in a classroom has been so eye-opening in huge ways. And there's small things about the program that I think we can change at a county level. Things like my kids go to Hilton Head IV, but if I want to sub at the Early Childhood Center, I have to be there at seven fifteen, and my kids can't be at IV any sooner than seven fifteen. So we've worked it out where there's a bus that takes the students and teachers who work at ECC over to IV, and they are letting my kids go on it, but things like that, the transportation and timing issues, especially if we're trying to highlight parents who are working as subs. And then there's bigger things, like we have a lot of retirees, my mom subbed last year, um, and it's exhausting. If we had more half-days set up, would teachers rather have a half-day of coverage somewhere than not have anybody at all? I see, I'm only set up for those school, three schools, uh, Creative Arts, IV, and ECC. And every day, there's at least six openings between those three schools that are just not being filled. So if we could have more creative license with how that's set up, either half-days or apart, or whatever it will be, um, or more floaters or more building-based subs being put in there. But being in it, I've seen so much more of what the need is and how badly it's needed too.
Yep, topics. So I believe that, I guess that's not a huge, yeah, that, uh, they, uh, point. The other topics. And, uh, I'm, I'm speaking at a relative doobie, but maybe the future topic we can have a discussion is the disciplinary structure, effective and minimized, some of the challenges that you have in the classroom.
Other comments? Questions?
We're going to hold a joint SIC meeting. It's not, will it be okay for, uh, me to board topics, possible topics after that meeting?
Well, then hearing no, unless there's an objection. He said a future, they're going to have a, a SIC meeting, and then they will have future topics, and they can get it to us later on. You don't have to all come tonight. We will, we will schedule another joint SIC board meeting. Hearing no objections then, by unanimous consent, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.